Okay, we're back after a short break. I think you indicated that you have a second letter or second something that you'd like us to consider.
I do. This is a letter that was prepared by many of the teachers at Calvin Lee. As teachers, we have been working hard this year to strengthen and deepen our students' conceptual understanding of key math standards while supporting them with solving complex problems and continued to provide work on a basic fluency practice. We have had to pull from a variety of places while constantly having to adjust instruction and materials to meet the needs of students who are both higher achieving and those who need additional support. We are pleased to have seen student growth this year. We are in need of a resource that supports the same type of instruction but that is more streamlined, fun, and engaging while addressing the standards. We believe that Bridges can provide this. It is student-centered, there's fluency work, pre-assessments and post-assessments, and it includes suggestions for formative assessments throughout various units. Additionally, we appreciate that the Bridges provides comprehensive background for the teacher in every unit, allowing us to develop our own knowledge. Within the units, there are suggestions that will help us support both students who need more support and those that are ready for the next step. We're eager for a resource to support the hard work we've done and appreciate that Bridges supports the type of workshop instruction that we are striving for in Guilford. It is a rich program and we acknowledge that it will be some work to get it up and running, but we believe that it is a good problem to have. Thank you so much for your consideration and continued support.
Thank you.
Okay, keeping the Lee theme going, you just heard that the teachers were speaking about the math component. I'm going to read a letter from one of our parents who has a little one, so she couldn't stay this late, and she and I'll be addressing the process. So I read, "To the Board of Education of Guilford Public Schools, I am writing in support of the Bridges math curriculum that is being considered for adoption by Guilford Public Schools. Bridges was scrutinized by an extremely competent group of educators in our district. Members of the math committee have piloted lessons and analyzed results of this curriculum in districts with similar demographics. They have determined that this curriculum will meet our needs. Last month, I was among a team of nine professionals on the search committee for the new Calvin Lee principal. I came away from the interview process with a confirmed level of confidence in our educational team in Guilford. The level of rigor applied in examining potential candidates speaks volumes to the commitment our teachers and administrators have to the success of our children. I am sure that the same level of rigor was applied in considering new math programs. After 24 years as an educator in a variety of districts and states, I trust the judgment of our Guilford Public Schools professionals in recommending the Bridges program. Respectfully, Susan Loughlin, Horseshoe Drive, Calvin Lee parent." I want to also speak as Nancy Bishop, Principal of Calvin Lee School, about process and product. We spend a lot of time in education talking about process and product. Just to give you a quick example, our kindergartners are currently writing how-to books. It's a product. What is also important and what is really important is the process. They're learning opinion writing. And I see this, the same parallel here. We had a very extensive process to find a product, and I think we've done that thoroughly, and I really am proud of the team that has done that. I'd also like to build on what Dr. Keen and Dr. Freeman said as far as keeping our eyes open. I've been here a long time, you know that, and I've never, ever seen this stop talking about math resources. It seems to be ongoing. It's not something we're doing in a rushed way. It's not something that's happening right now overnight. We have talked about math resources, and I can say, for at least 19 years. We also are always looking at what's coming. We want to get the best product we can at the time. We go through a process that's very thorough to get a product that's very good. So, the answer for me is, why don't we wait a year? Number one, because we've looked for years and years and years, and this is our moment to see a resource that we believe in. And two, if I had a second grader, I'd want to start now. Our teachers are ready. They really want to have the training so they're ready to hit the ground running next fall, and I really support that. So I trust in our process and I believe we have a great product. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Hi, Anne Lombard. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Baldwin. I live in Clinton but teach in Guilford. I wanted to speak in favor of the Bridges program. I was on the committee that reviewed the other textbooks also, and I also experienced other textbooks through my own children through the Clinton Public Schools, which is one that we did review. However, I can say, everything everyone has said tonight is positive and I agree with everything, but we also still in our schools, we do the POLs, the Principles of Learning, and this Bridges program incorporates that, especially the socializing intelligence and the accountable talk. And I have students this year who came in not liking math, and just by doing more rigorous problems that the Bridges contain and the format that they do them in, the workshop format, they asked me, can we work on this during study hall when we're not in math class? To me, that's, it's doing its job. We make the kids excited. It's real-life problems, whether it's developing a trail map with, using fractions. They have to understand what gets put into that. Also, I did have the opportunity to attend a professional development opportunity with, through the state a couple weeks ago, and they discussed, and it was all about implementing and how you have the children working in small groups to go around and figure out how you take the kids from the concrete to the more abstract thinking, which is what we want. I don't stand and teach anymore as much as I used to. It's much more of a student-driven classroom, and that's what the Bridges would support. So hopefully you will consider making a motion to adopt the Bridges program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vince Augustine, the Principal of A.W. Cox School, and I just wanted to say that, you know, I've, over the years, I've served on at least five mathematics curriculum committees. And, you know, I appreciate the hard work that goes into what they've done. And I have to say, in working with Maria over these past couple of years, I have absolute trust in her work and her work ethic and her ability to really dig in and look at, you know, what's out there. So I wanted to thank the committee for their hard work and also to, you know, to say that I endorse what, all they've done to identify and recommend Bridges in mathematics. But rather than me saying a few words, I just want to introduce one of my teachers who's going to really speak on behalf of the A.W. Cox teachers, and that's Ms. Christina Fontana. Ms. Fontana brings a lot of experience in mathematics to our district. She participated with Dr. Shelby Cole, Mathematics Director of the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, and contributing to the mathematics sections of the Smarter Balance Assessment. Ms. Fontana's been interested in the importance of journal writing in mathematics. That is, how do students build logical progressions, communicate their conclusions, and respond to arguments. Sometime next year, Ms. Fontana's work in this area will be published by the National Council of Teachers' Mathematics. So she has a little bit of experience in this area. So I'm proud and excited about the contribution of all the Cox teachers have done for the mathematics program this year and look forward to the future with Bridges in mathematics. So let me turn it over to Christina. She can talk a little bit about her perspective.
Hello, I'm Christina Fontana. I teach second grade at A.W. Cox. So when I took the time to look through Bridges, I was really looking for opportunities of deeper thinking, and because of my personal experience, I was looking for places where the students will be expected to write to explain their reasoning, which is something that's more and more expected of students. So, in my research at the University of Connecticut, I focused on mathematical practice number three, which says that students should be able to construct viable arguments and critique the reasoning of others. And I found that fostering this process through writing is really what pushes students to think more deeply about a concept, which in turn will give them greater understanding. So both of these aspects were found in Bridges. There were many tasks that drove students to deeper thinking, but then students were also pushed to answer questions such as, how do you know? Explain your thinking. Do you agree with so-and-so and why? So just for an example of one that I found when I was looking through the resources, was in Place Value to 1,000, there was a lesson that required students to continue a pattern of unifix cubes. They were working independently to come to a realization that every arrangement in the pattern had to be an even number because every arrangement was double the arrangement number. So to come to this realization, the students worked independently to write observations of what they noticed at each pattern and each arrangement in the pattern, and then they needed to critique the reasoning of another student by saying, Sam says the sequence is a growing sequence. Do you agree with Sam? Why or why not? So in this activity, the students were required to reason abstractly as well as quantitatively, which is mathematical practice number two. The students were then pushed to think more deeply by writing what they noticed happened with the pattern. And lastly, they evaluated another student's thinking and defended it in writing. So from my personal experience and from the research that I've done and from my professional experience, I believe that Bridges has these really important things that we believe in here in Guilford and that I believe in, I think our school believes in as well, will help be our students, have our students be successful in math.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe we could get a group photo of the principal.
Jill Hale, Principal of Guilford Lakes Elementary School, and I'm here to speak in support of the adoptions of the Bridges math program. You know that the state of Connecticut has adopted the Common Core State Standards, and this adoption affected curriculum across the state. But here in Guilford, we took a very proactive role in our work under Maria's leadership. Last year, we adopted the new math curriculum. Over the summer, the elementary principals worked to create professional development opportunities. So our teachers, they work with Maria each week. Each week, teachers from all four elementary schools across the grade meet and review curriculum, identify resources, and plan instruction. These teachers have done an incredible job of orchestrating instruction while continually finding resources on their own and with Maria to support their work. Then each school sent a representative to the resource review team that was facilitated again by Maria. As principals, we were careful to include each school, each grade level in the representation. This review team met, reviewed resources, visited a school district where the program has been implemented, brought the recommendations to the faculty and to the community for review. The faculty at Lakes reviewed the program and supports the decision of the committee. The teachers were so impressed with the alignments of the Common Core as well as the components of the program, including the reinforcements, enrichment, and home components. The teachers and the administrators support the adoption of the Bridges program, and I believe that they went through a very thorough process to get here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christina.
Paula McCarthy, Principal at Melissa Jones School, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Bridges math program. My staff and I are very supportive of this program. Two of our teachers participated in the selection process and, as well as a parent, and you heard from him this evening as well. We've had a math night so far. We spent our May PTO meeting talking about math, spent a faculty meeting, and several PLC meetings. The teachers and I recognize that the pedagogy used in this program is similar to the kind of instruction that the Guilford framework is asking of us as educators, much more so than the other materials that were considered. We like the balance of math concepts, math fluency, and real-life applications. We also particularly like the ongoing formative and assumative assessment components that we could use to monitor and adjust instruction for our students. We hope the Board of Education will adopt the program materials. We understand that no program is more important than our professional judgment and training in Guilford. However, as elementary educators who teach five to six subjects daily, we find the program best meets our needs at this time, and we certainly appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
Steve Arby, Guilford resident, P.O. Box 230. Just a couple of questions. Some are quantitative and perspective. I'm curious to know if we've counted the total number of problems in each of the books, whether it's the teachers or the student, or also the home edition.
We have not. No, I think you asked that question at the meeting.
Right, I asked before. I was wondering, has anybody followed up on it?
I don't think anybody said they were going to.
Okay, I think we should know the number of problems that are in there.
Okay.
And then, and then use that as a comparison to Engage New York is doing, to justify that maybe more problems is better sometimes. Maybe we should think about the weight, the quality of the problem, so we can say, the students versus what's going on currently, most of it's Engage New York from what I've seen, could be different in different grades. We can say then, the reason why we like this is not that because we think students are engaged more, or that we think it's better for teachers, but we can numerically say that the book and the product is better because we have qualification based on weight and based on quantity. So, the reason why I say this, my daughter got an email from Khan Academy, which, which we use extensively to support the education that she's getting here, and last week she got an email from the Sel-Khan organization thanking her for help, and her helped to solve 2 billion problems in one year. Now, that made some, that made a lot of sense to her, because she does a lot of problems, and we count what we're doing each week and how far we're going. And we also look at pages. Some pages are easy, some pages are more difficult. So she's aware of those things. As a population, we should be aware of how many are easier problems, how many are mid-level, how many are really set up for high-achieving students. If we're going to differentiate, let's make sure we know what the differentiation is. We don't know that. And if we're going to use these materials, let's make sure we know how much is, in the books that we're buying, we're just going to spend 180-some thousand dollars, great. That's, that's really not a lot of money. But for what we're buying, how much is, how much of that material is going to give us problems for high-achieving students? Or is this middle-of-the-road? My estimations, I'll give it a B, which is, which is far better than what we have now, which is an F. Scraps of paper, notebooks. I don't, you know, I haven't been in Guilford that long. I don't even know how we could have gotten in that situation, how a Board of Education or administration or the teacher corps could allow something like that, like that to happen. You know, a book is better than notebook. At least it's something to build from. You know, does anybody know how long we've been without math books?
How long we, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time understanding.
How, how long have we been without math books?
At what level?
Well, at these grades.
At K to 5?
K to 5.
They have, they have, they have materials, they have resources.
Right.
Do they, do we think that they're adequate? No, that's why we're here.
Right.
That's why we're having this conversation. We do not think the current situation is reasonable.
And, and for the, for the Engage New York, who made those decisions?
How long has Engage New York even been being used? I, I think that's only a supplemental material. I don't recall the board ever.
We identified those materials within the curriculum document as supplemental materials that teachers could draw from.
Okay, we say supplemental, but I see 80, 90 percent.
Okay.
I don't see supplemental. I see major.
I'm trying to answer your question. The board never voted, as I recall anyway, the board never voted on Engage New York. The board, as I recall, the last time we voted on curricular materials or instructional materials for the math curriculum, K to 5 was Everyday Mathematics in 2004 or '03?
Correct.
Something like that.
And we still have Everyday Mathematics. What we found with, when we adopted the new curriculum, and this is why we're here now, is that Everyday Mathematics was not going to meet the needs of the curriculum without picking and choosing across grade levels. And so therefore, we had to supplement it with some other things. Teachers then had the choice around whether it was Georgia, or Engage New York, or Everyday Math, or some of the other resources that we found that said, here are some rich things in the transition because we have to look for a new resource for K-5. And so that's why we're here today. We still have those books. They were consumable at the K-1 and 2 level. There was actually reference books, I believe, beginning at grade 3. It might have been beginning at grade 2.
Right. I get it. It was, it was all over the place, and you're doing the best.
Right, absolutely.
And you're doing the best you can do, and so are the teachers. I don't doubt that. Okay?
So that's, that's where we are, but.
But the quality, the quality of what I've seen is poor. So, my questions are now, let's not create the same mistakes. If we're, if we're going with one book, let's make sure we know how many problems these kids are going to solve in one year. And if we don't meet that goal, we should know that. If, if the kids are going to solve more than what's in those books, great. We say, we say we're going to do something that, there's some things in Bridges that we're not going to use. Well, what is it? I want to know what it is. And I want to know when it's going to change. And if we're not going to use those things, why is that? Now, I understand teachers get discretion, and so do administrators and boards, but parents should be informed too. If we're not, if we're given a book, the home edition, which I got to say is decent, okay, it looks satisfactory to what's out on the marketplace. It is a bit of a desert out there. But if we're not going to use the whole book, and we're going to talk platitudes, and we're going to just talk in generalities, I'm going to ask you for specifics. What are we not going to use?
I'll tell you what we are going to use. We're going to use what needs to be used to meet the curriculum standards and the Common, and the curriculum, our local curriculum implementing the Common Core State Standards.
I know, but you've already said there's things you're not going to use. It sounds like we've already made decisions.
Mr. Block, individual teachers make decisions within the resources and communicate those decisions to the parents of the students within their classes.
Okay.
Right, but we're here, we're here tonight talking about we're selecting a book. It sounds like, if I listen to you, Bill, it sounded like you already know, or someone already knows, that there's materials in there, or is that, or is that just a safety net?
I don't think, I don't recall saying that, by the way. Did I?
A book doesn't, isn't a program.
Do you remember me saying that?
A program is curriculum.
No, I understand that. I understand that. We could play back the tape.
A book is a resource.
Right, but people have, people have said in general terms that we're buying this book and all in the same sentence, within the same paragraph, it all relates, there's some things in here that we're not going to use.
I, I, no.
I heard that very clearly.
It wasn't perfect.
That's right.
Because there were some things that we might still have to beef up.
Right.
For example, performance task. There aren't any really good.
Very good, thank you. Great.
Okay, so those are the things we know we need to add to that. We haven't said we're not going to be doing this, or we're not going to be doing that, because we think it's a pretty good match to the standards and that we're going to, we will be using it. I don't think anybody said, we said it wasn't a perfect resource, and it still might need to be supplemented. But I don't think anybody said we're not going to be doing this, or we're not going to be doing that. We haven't identified a particular unit or lesson.
If, in fact, it aligns with the, with the Common Course, if, if we are right that our local curriculum aligns with the Common Core State Standards, and if we're right that the resource material aligns with Common Core State Standards, then there isn't going to be, I mean, could there be a page here? Sure. But in terms of the expectations of what a third-grade student is going to learn in math, that is defined by our local curriculum.
Right.
And that is, if we're right, that the, if the committee has made a wise recommendation that the material aligns to both our local curriculum and the Common Core State Standards, which our local curriculum is, that I'm pretty confident is aligned, that component of it, then there aren't going to be broad swaths, broad subject areas that aren't addressed because that's the point of getting an aligned book, or set, or to be more accurate, instructional materials. I think all I intended to say was if there is an area where a teacher feels more comfortable using, say, something from the, you know, from a textbook from 20 years ago, then we're not going to tell a teacher that they can't do that. But still, the expectation is, you're right, this is, this is a relatively large purchase, relatively speaking. And I think we, we, I mean, I understand that Dr. Freeman doesn't have a, you know, is not wed to it so that if in three years we're, we're convinced that there's something better, we might go in a different direction. Okay, but that's not really the issue. The issue tonight is, is it the best that's available today for what our expectations are in Guilford? So I'm not really worried about, you know, that. I'm worried about, is this the right decision for today?
Sorry, sorry about that. Relating to Smarter Balance, have we seen performance against Smarter Balance teaching this type of, teaching from these books?
No.
Okay.
It's impossible because Smarter Balance didn't start until three weeks ago.
Right, I understand. Do we have an opportunity to do that? Can we grab a, a group of students in the different grades, run them through three weeks of it, and then see, go online, there's the practice test, find kids that haven't taken it, and see how they do? Would that be, would that be a metric that we'd be interested in? Can we, can we take that opportunity to do that?
One of the questions that we asked the, some of the districts around the country implementing Bridges was, what student outcomes have you seen? And I'll just go through a couple of them if you want. No data, because they just started using it. This is from Madison. "No data at this point, but significant observed outcomes in student engagement, discourse, conceptual understanding, and skills." Range View Elementary and IB School in Colorado. "Significant increase in scores on Bridges and state tests, especially for traditionally lagging groups, as well as significant increase from before adoption in students achieving advanced in each grade." Different, this is the Director of Instruction from Weld County. "We are seeing an increase in our Ames Web scores this year across the district in our K-2 implementation in concepts and computation. The second edition has more computational practice than the first edition, which has helped with some of our initial scores. We are looking for long-term gains and expected to see some implementation dips because some of our students have not gotten what they needed in previous years because of weaknesses and inconsistencies in our old program." This is from Middlebury, Vermont. "Addison Central Supervisory District. Students are learning to higher levels and understanding at deeper levels than before a resource was purchased." White River, Washington. "Increased scores across the board. Schools have received the Washington Achievement Award for Improvement."
Menemene.
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 It gave us this, their PowerPoint.
Bill, I'm sure, you know, I don't want to interrupt her. I'm sure, I'm sure there's plenty of, you know, merit letters talking about how great it is. And frankly, I think it's decent, okay? And however, due process suggests that we get a little more local evidence.
I'm sorry, a little more, I'm sorry.
Well, she's seen, seen the proof here, local evidence.
Well.
Which is, try it out on more students in just two weeks or one lesson on area.
I thought they did that. Isn't that what we heard from?
Teachers piloted lessons. What we have not done is identified a control group of students, give them an isolated experience with this program, and then given them something of a post-test. Those sorts of control group of experiments are very difficult in education. Maria gave an anecdotal evidence piece from Menemene, where they attempted to have two different programs they were piloting, and halfway through the year, parents started calling and insisting that their students be taken out of the control group and placed into the Bridges program. It's difficult to create controlled situations in public education.
But we do have between now and September, four or five months, and there's probably parents that'd be willing to have their kids exposed to it.
I, I don't have teaching staff available over the summer.
Right. But let's say we did.
Well, we don't have the training scheduled. I mean, we can't do anything until we do adoption.
But let's say we did. Let's say we did. Wouldn't it be worthwhile doing? It's just simple. Would it be worthwhile knowing that information before the decision? If we could afford it, if we had the time and the people, would it not be worth doing to definitively show that a select group of kids could take that knowledge that's being taught from, from those materials and perform well against Smarter Balance? Would that not be worth doing?
Before with the statistician.
Well, I'm just going to say the following. I mean, I think we're in an environment where, and we've mentioned this at several board meetings before, that's very challenging and has a lot of unknowns. We have a core curriculum that has a test associated with it, which we're field testing nationally this year. We have, thankfully, pushback on teacher evaluations, which at some point in the very recent past, we're going to use Smarter Balance outcomes, which have not yet been field tested, for their evaluation. I mean, I think there's a lot of unknown here. There's a reality that we have six grades of kids and the teachers teaching them that really need a textbook. So that I think what we are going to need to rely on, and I as a board member am going to need to rely on are at least two things. The expertise of the teaching staff, the math curriculum committee, and the administration, and the many ways in which they've evaluated this textbook, and quite frankly, input from community members, whether it's parents or not, who have math backgrounds, who have present math experience. I think the reality at this moment is, in an ideal world, it would be fabulous to pilot test this kind of thing. It is absolutely not, I mean, we're not in a position, we're absolutely not in a position to do that. We're, we're simply not in a position to do that. And, and I would argue that it's not in the best interest of our students to, to try to consider figuring out how to do that before providing them with a needed resource to further instruction. I mean, I, I will be honest and say that.
Point taken. That's fine.
I just.
Right. Okay. Having gone through kindergarten, first, second, maybe halfway through the thir, halfway through the third grade, home editions, and maybe only 10 percent for the student edition, and very little of what the teachers have, the teachers bound stuff that was over at the, over at the school, or over at the, over at Anne's office. My comments for, for the home edition, better than the student edition. The home edition was, was less gamey than what the student edition, which I think matches up more with what's going to go on in the, on in the classroom. That's what I saw. I'm not saying good or bad, I'm just saying that's what I saw. The, the home edition, not too different than what you could find at Lake Shore Learning for workbooks. You can teach a curriculum from a workbook if you're, if you know math and you're on top of it. I know a lot of teachers want, you know, want bound, you know, or, you know, want three-ring binders of exactly what, to keep them on track, and if that's what they need, well, that's what they need. But you can, you can teach them a workbook. You can teach them the home edition. You could probably teach them the student edition. I, I don't think they're uncoupling those. They're probably making you buy all of them, right? 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 Let's see, other comments. Overall, I thought, I thought the, the materials were more graphic or visual presentations of math, less alphanumeric. So for every kid that you get visually, you'll probably lose someone who's more alphanumeric. Alpha numerics are very efficient ways to drive a lot of problems at a student. Now, some people call that drilling, but you can put up 100 problems on a sheet of paper, that's all alphanumeric, or short symbol. But when you're dealing with graphics, or larger word problems, you're lucky if you get three or four. Now, there's merit in doing that, you know, because sometimes you can drill a little deeper in concept. But once you get the concept, they're falling short on repetitive tasks that kids need to learn math. The repetitive process is a valuable process in mathematics. It is in music and many other ways to learn. It's not so much a process like reading, where you can just tell a kid, here, take this book home and read it, and how many books did you read over summer, you know? It's, with math, it's a number of problems in different looks at the same kind of problem. Their materials are shorter on problems than, say, other materials. And when you're, when you have less problems to look at, you're getting less exposure. It's easier to get tripped up or tricked on something you haven't seen. And you don't always have time to think it out. So if you, if you're in a curriculum that is more problem-centric, where they're going to give you a lot more problems than just trying to drill down in one or two concepts, then you're going to be short in the long run. So what this book is doing is playing a game between the two. They seem to be splitting it fairly decently. But in the long run, the parents at home are going to have to do the extra, probably have to do the extra work. There's no magic bullet for teaching math, or to inspire someone to pursue a career in mathematics. Bill, Paul, you didn't pursue those careers, for whatever your reasons were.
No, but my daughter seemed to be on the road to it, so who knows?
Someone inspired her, right?
And all the kids in school are not going to pursue a career in math.
Absolutely not, absolutely not. But I'll just finish up with this. It's interesting they have a bridge on the cover. In 50 years, the Quinnipiac Bridge is going to be, need to rebuild. That's about all that one's going to last. Took about four years to find a developer to willing to take that job on this time, mostly to do to personnel and the complexity of the problem. In 50 years, are we going to say anybody from this program, anybody who's in first grade, seven years old, will be 57 years old in 50 years? The bridge will have to be rebuilt. Are we saying that a book like this is going to get them to that point where they can compete? And be on a design team, a build team, a process team? Because ultimately, that's where this bridge has to take them. It's not about us, we all have jobs. 50 years, most of us won't be in this room, well, we won't even be alive. But they're going to need, they're going to need the work. So we have to say, are we honestly, are we, can we bet for these kids? Are we making a bet that this material and this curriculum is really what they need? Will allow them to compete? And then, one last comment. I'm not of the camp of Singapore math, or Germany, or France, or anybody else's math. I want Guilford math. This is, this is, this is the mark we need to make. We don't need anybody else. Math has, math has been around, mostly in its form since Newton. There's not a lot of differences. The applications are different. That's it. About 600 major topics in math. That's all, that's all, anybody who's going to pursue a serious math education has, would ever have to come across. Most of them don't get that far. They go maybe 60 or 70 areas. We're teaching arithmetic at these early grades. We need, we need to pick it up if these kids are going to compete, if they're going to be on a design team in 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No taker? That's it? Okay. Do you want to add anything, Dr. Freeman, or Mrs. Carreri, or anybody else? I, you know, I'm going to, we're about three hours into the meeting, go ahead.
Well, there is one thing that I would like to add. I would like to thank and commend Maria Carreri and Ann Keane for the work that they have put into this process. I said at the opening of this topic, this has turned into an engaged, vigorous conversation about education in our community. I want to thank Dr. Keane and Mrs. Carreri for the work they did on the front end, running what I think was a thorough, inclusive, and transparent process. I want to thank them more so for the way that they have engaged in this conversation. For the last month, we have been having a conversation about math instruction and this particular text. We haven't seen that around any other text that has been proposed during my time here in Guilford. I want to applaud the community, but I really want to thank our staff, Maria and Ann particularly, for the work that they've put into helping you now take this conversation from us as we pass it to you with this recommendation.
That's a good comment. This, you know, and since I've been on the board for 15 years, I do not recall any meeting where teachers in this number have shown up to talk about instructional materials. And that's important to me, because I think, because I'd add to Dr. Valleschase, the other piece that I really think is important, not only to teachers and the community members, but the experience in the other districts. I mean, that matters to me. And because that's the test, if you will, you know, I agree with whoever said, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, but where Madison is doing something that, you know, whatever, I take that into account. I mean, that's evidence. And, but I think, you know, the teachers are certainly to be thanked for the efforts that they made to be here this evening, and actually, and their work all along. We are almost three hours into our business meeting.
Two pages of agenda left.
And we have multiple agenda items left. And I know that, I've got a couple of questions that I'd like to explore a little bit with the administration, and maybe whoever, Dr. Keane, Dr. Freeman, Ms. Carreri. I'm going to, unless anybody is really opposed to it, I'd like to suggest that we carry this over to the next board meeting in two weeks, not the regular, regular meeting. And maybe we'll carry it over again, but I didn't hear that there's an urgency in terms of tonight versus two weeks from tonight. Or what is, two weeks, it's, two weeks and a day, right? Because it's Memorial Day?
Yes, yes. It's a day after Memorial Day.
Okay, so it's the Tuesday.
Which I'll note is a meeting that we are tentatively scheduled to meet cooperatively with the Building Committee to review furniture fixtures and equipment selections, but those two items would fit fine. I will have to-
And maybe we start a half an hour early.
Right, I would have to postpone other agenda items to the June meeting, which I think would work well.
Okay. I mean, does anybody have any serious-
No, in light that we just, that we just got this binder full of materials that we have not had a chance really to review on our own. I think it would be to our advantage to really take some time to look through this, what's in the binder, and be able to, so we could table this for today, and in, at a workshop meeting in two weeks, be prepared, better prepared to do the vote.
That's okay with me. Does anybody have any strong feelings other way? Okay.
I just, Bill, wanted to point out that we in this community are fortunate to have not only very well-qualified and well-spoken teachers and administrators, but also community people who have taken the time to review all this material from their expertise. And as I think about this, that really underscores that rolling out a new program such as this, it's not just a textbook, you know? It's more than a textbook, it's a program. And rolling out a new program involves a, two main stakeholders. One of the teachers and the administrators, and the other are the parents. Because the parents are going to be seeing new material come home with their children. And I think, I applaud the administration for doing a wonderful job of working with the teachers, so that they have bought into this, and they accept and are enthusiastic about this program. That's great. But I think the parents and the community need to equally have a rollout of any new program, whether we adopt this one or some other one. And it's now mid-May, and we're putting this off till end May to make a decision, or June. And will we have the time to work with the parents to get them on board for whatever program we roll out? And that's my concern.
I think it's my experience with, as a teacher, that parents will have greater commitment to the, to what we can bring them, when their kid is actually working on those materials. I've been to a lot of parent meetings where 10 people come. And we stand on our head for a presentation, and we've only reached a very small percent. I think when your kids are going to be involved, and you're getting these different-looking homework papers, or whatever, they're going to be much more willing to come in, to be involved, and we can catch them much better. They will, they will understand it better, because they're going to be, to do it ahead of time, it doesn't have the same meaning. Next year, in the rollout, that's the time to do a lot of this, sort of have these plans with parents, bring them in and show them where we're headed, what we're doing, where this program is going. Then they've got a commitment to it, and larger numbers will show.
I will note to both your points, we hosted four family math nights this year, one at each of the four elementary schools. Summed to some pretty significant turnouts, 150 families participating at one. Remember that the curriculum was adopted last year, and so those family math nights this year highlighted the curricular changes that we are talking about. They talked about pedagogy, they talked about the types of teaching approaches in math that the students will be doing. When we hosted an evening to showcase the material, the resources we're talking about, I believe we had about seven families who were represented. I do think that there may be something in having the materials, letting the first two or three home letters go home, and then inviting parents in to showcase. I do appreciate the comment, though, that we will need time to be prepared. I don't think that a two-week delay will affect the way that we can train staff, or the way that we can roll it out. I would be concerned if we begin pushing into our summer meeting schedule, and we have not come to conclusion on this, this decision, one way or another.
Is there enough time in the meantime to post some of these issues to the website? Perhaps gather, because there's been a series of questions, and we have response from various sources. If we could get it all together into one document and post it to the website?
We've already started work on sort of a frequently asked question document that would summarize some of the lead-up to tonight's meeting, and some of the conversation at tonight's meeting, which we can post to our website, along with the data from Menemonee Falls, which was referenced several times tonight. So I think, yes, we can certainly do that. We can maintain the materials at Lathrop House for the next two weeks. We can post additional materials to our website, and we would look forward to continuing the conversation with you at your next meeting in two weeks.
We do have, well, I guess, I'm curious, we have a forum on the 29th, and I know that's not specifically about the math curriculum, but it's a Common Core state standards explanation forum, parent night, and I would guess that you'd get a lot greater volume of parents than, you know, I know, for instance, I knew about the math night that we, several of us were at Calvin Lee because of the board, but the flyer came home the day before. So it was hard to, you know, we might get, this has been advertised for a while, we might get more parents, so if we're talking about it two days before a parent meeting...
Let's see where we are. I mean, we did do a parent night on specifically this, and five parents showed up, you know, so I must tell you, I don't, I have not had anywhere close to the volume of communications on this particular issue as we did with Everyday Mathematics in 2003.
That's true.
It's not close. You know, there are some, you know, there's, I think there's, there are some people who have strong opinions one way or the other, and that's fine. You know, I think there, this is one of these areas that I think probably all the opinions are valid, frankly. They're just, there are differences in perspective, and there are differences in, you know, obviously the teachers have a, have a perspective, and by the way, not an important perspective that we need to try to take into account, but, you know, let's just see how it goes. Well, it'll be on the agenda for that Tuesday, and then we'll, we'll see where we are.
Because I agree with what Dr. Myers was saying, it's important for parents to be on board before, I don't, I don't necessarily agree that it's okay to have them on board after it's rolled out. They need to be on board and feel like they've been heard, and, and understand what's, what's available, and what's, I mean, this is the beginning of math for young kids. This isn't, you know, a one-year, one-class textbook. It's the foundation for everything.
This is a beginning.
It is, but we've just spent, and just to remind you, we've just spent two and a half hours talking about this tonight. If we're going to, if we're going to do that again at the Common Core meeting, then we're not going to talk about Common Core.
That's right.
So I, you know, there is a, there may be some limits to what, you know, is a practical matter we can do. But, you know, again, let's see where we are on Tuesday, and, you know, if we move forward, we move forward. If we aren't comfortable, if we haven't got some of the answers that we'd like to have, then we won't, you know, then we won't move forward. That'd be my suggestion, but let's see where we are. All right, so that'll be it for tonight on the, on that agenda item 10.4. Just for kicks, to show that we can adopt a textbook, I'd like to go to 10.3. So 10.3, is there a motion that we approve the textbook recommendation for Physics Principles with Application, 7th Edition?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so-
There, we can do it. We know we can do it. Thank you very much.
All right, there are some things we have to do. Obviously, tonight, I'd like to try to defer as much as we possibly can, but we do need to take action on the April 7 minutes. Is there a motion to approve the April 7 Operations Committee meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any changes, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. April 7, 2014, regular meeting minutes, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any changes, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm so sorry, can I ask a question? Why are we voting on an Operations Committee meeting minutes at our board meeting?
Because we always have, but, you know, we've talked about this before-
Have we done that before?
No, we haven't been doing that this year.
The Operations Committee, which itself approved its own minutes, I'm sure, earlier this evening.
Well, we always had committee meetings on here.
No.
We've stopped doing that.
Okay.
I apologize.
No, no, that's fine, it was just a question, I thought maybe I missed something.
It's usually the workshop, right?
All right, so we'll have to, we did not have any-
We didn't have the workshop.
That's right, it got canceled because Mr. Mitchell was not available.
Retreat?
No, we canceled the last workshop meeting because of scheduling conflicts on the two topics that were scheduled. By the way, I should have done my Jordan pictures, but we didn't do those.
But we do have to do minutes of the retreat.
The retreat.
Technically, we didn't take any votes, and so, you know, that's that kind of netherworld of, as to whether there really is a need for minutes, or just a record of a meeting.
I'll use the agenda and put together broadly-worded minutes, if that meets your approval, and if it's not for approval.
There were no votes, so it really, and we never went into-
Right, there were no votes, no actions.
No actions, never went into executive session.
Right, right.
So that's fine.
Yep.
Okay. So, were you the reviewer, I thought? I thought Mrs. Sullivan was.
It's me, yeah. We didn't get the change in time.
Okay. And I know this was talked about five hours ago in the finalists committee.
We'll make it very brief, because it's very exciting. The expenditures for the month of April are $3,926,073.15. Expenditures and encumbrances through the end of April are 70.59% of the budget, which as compared to last year at this time, it was 71.9%. Everything looks good. We anticipate there might be a surplus.
Okay, great. So then, is there a motion to approve the expenditures for the month of April?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Public forum is going to be impossible, because the public has left.
Flood.
Yeah, blast.
Well, look, no, listen, there were, there were quite a few people here for three hours.
That was terrific.
That was very good.
That's pretty good. You know, and we're talking about, as Dr. Freeman said, we're talking about education instead of parking patterns, or, you know, whatever. All right, Dr. Freeman, let's do the Cliff Notes edition of the administrative vacancies.
I can make this very brief. We have begun committee meetings with the representative committees for the Leet vacancy, the Leet principalship. We are moving into a phase where we're scheduling site visits for a number of candidates. We are just finishing the paper screening and snapshot interviews for the Baldwin position. We have seated a committee, and we'll be bringing that committee together to meet finalists soon. I want to bring your attention to item 9.4, and let you know that we have accepted- I want to bring your attention to item 9.4, and let you know that we have accepted an exchange student who will be joining us next year. We reviewed class sizes in the affected area. Mr. Masenti met with representatives from the exchange organization, feels confident accepting this student. We think it will enrich the experience for students throughout the high school. Policy requires that I bring that to your attention.
Okay, but we don't vote on that, is that a point?
I don't believe it requires any action on your part.
Okay.
As we noted earlier in the meeting, Smarter Balance continues. I will tell you briefly, three things. We have learned scheduling components through our experience. You heard some comment earlier today that the testing has impacted scheduling, and we've learned from that. I would say particularly at Adams and the high school. We will be scheduling differently next year than we scheduled this year. Scheduling at the elementary school, I would suggest that it was actually less of a disruption than the CMT has been in past history. From a technology perspective, I'll note that we had some rough days as we launched. Dr. Keane was giving daily feedback, both to the State Department and to the Smarter Balance help desk. But as we have eased into it, in fact, the technology seems to be working well, very well at this point. We have restructured staffing around our technology team, and with an aide in each building, they have the support that they need, and it's going from a technological perspective, in fact, well at this point. I will note that Mr. Mitchell wrote and received a $127,000 grant that does go to improving and strengthening our infrastructure. It was grant monies that were specifically targeted at Smarter Balance. And before we administer next year, we expect to have a more robust connectivity in every building, and we're doing that through a program with Comcast. Thank you, it's the cable company. Common Core State Standard Forum, we do have a forum scheduled on the 29th. The expectation for that evening is that we will have a panel of teachers who will talk about how the Common Core has affected their teaching, and how Common Core State Standards live in their classroom. We're working very much to keep my participation to a minimum, and to highlight the teachers' conversation in this presentation. A night for teachers to talk about instruction in their classrooms, and to generate a dialogue around that. I have no question that math, and even this textbook, will come up, but I would, I would like to, if possible, really focus on how Common Core has affected instruction in the classroom. That was the question that was really, I think, prominent before the last two to three weeks, and we've shifted to this one. So that's what we've sort of, we're responding to and putting it together, so I know that we've already started reaching out to some teacher participants. We'd like to sort of keep it shaped in that way, if that's acceptable to the board.
We'll see how we do.
Okay. And that concludes my report.
Okay, excellent. Board Agenda 10.1 is, we do have some significant personnel items. We have seven retirements that we need to ratify, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Mary Johnson, Andrea Nummergut, Lynn Curtis, Marcia Borenstein, Carol Pope, Virginia Swartz, and Joseph Peluso. Is there a motion that we ratify those resignations with, with thanks?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So what's the total now on retirements, do you know?
Mr. Boden just excused himself. I believe we're approaching 12. It is getting close to what we had last year.
Yeah, okay. All right. Ms. Trudeau is nodding her head, so.
Can I get that? Right.
All right. And then there are three non-renewals, Jane Cox at the high school, Joelle Morrow at Baldwin, and the two tenths FTE, James Holleran at Baldwin. Is there a motion?
I would just note that all of these teachers have served well. It is simply a non-renewal because they were invited in to fill a one-year absence. Easiest way to think of it is a year leave for maternity leave, and so it is essentially a reduction in force. As the teacher, they were covering for returns to try, it's another item that we're looking to clean up in the personnel office. I don't believe we ever brought these forward to you as non-renewals. We should be, and so you'll be seeing these on an annual basis for those one-year hires. They will then show as annual non-renewals, to make sure that we are in compliance and doing things the right way.
Okay. So is there a motion to ratify those non-renewals?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. There's an IDEA grant application that, you have an exhibit. Is there a motion that we approve the submission of the IDEA grant?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Ms., who's, who's the chair? Policy Committee Chair. I'm going to suggest we carry this over unless you are, do we need to act on this tonight?
We were actually, based on a conversation we had earlier tonight at the Finance Committee, looking at our end of the year finances, action on the first, Policy 3314, changing the bidding threshold. A change tonight would allow us to close the books this year, and bring fewer items forward to full bidding, but simply competitive pricing if that decision were made tonight.
Okay, that's fine. So, but I understood there was a correction to the draft.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, it is.
So that's exactly right. So in the third paragraph down, if the submitted price of the bid is under, that should read $25,000, the superintendent or Daisy Lee May awards. So that's the correction from what was sent originally.
And that brings us in line with the town. Is that the rationale for this?
Yes.
That's exactly right.
Yep.
Okay.
So again, this is, the bidding requirements, the only changes to this particular document are the monetary amounts to bring into line.
All right, Mr. Casey, moved. Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, can we carry 10.5.2 and 10.5, I'm sorry, yeah, 10.5.2 and 3 over to the next month? If that's all right with people?